I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, December, or 5th, 2023 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, those in the audience and on air. So is there any, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Just one that I'll call out, Mayor. It's not a very recent addition, but just for the point of transparency, item K was added to the consent agenda after it was distributed on Friday or at the end of the day Friday, just to change the next council meeting's date from Tuesday, the 19th to Thursday, the 21st. Hopefully, folks saw that communicated a bit online as well. That'll be the entire agenda for that evening, switching, and a portion of that is council attendance issue, and then a portion of that is the Project Bigfoot item to allow that to be completed its A U A R review and then fit within the guidelines of action. So sliding the 19th to the 21st is item K.
All right. With the addition of six K to the consent agenda, I'll move the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's approved. This evening, there are no presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We'll move on to item four, response to public comment. First item up, Mr. Numcheck for the Gymnast LLC, Submittal, Project Bigfoot.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council staff. Appreciate this time to provide counsel with an update on the work that has been taking place with regards to the request by Gymnast LLC for a construction of a data center specifically related to the update of the Umore Park A U A R as required by state statute. Just a little background for the council and folks at home on what an A U A R is. A U A R stands for Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, and it is, the process is a hybrid of the Environmental Assessment Worksheet, or E A W, and Environmental Impact Statement, also known as an E I S. And this process is often used when a large area is to be developed, particularly in multiple phases. An example of this would be the Presswick Place A U A R that has been updated at least twice since I've been here with the city, and that is the areas on the east and west sides of Akron Avenue, north of County Road 42. Once the A U A R process is complete, future projects within that A U A R area do not require individual E I S or E A W documents, but it must be updated every five years to incorporate development that's occurred within the A U A R area, as well as any changes to state and federal laws. So if there's new species added to the endangered species list, or there are changes to the way stormwater infrastructure needs are calculated, those are taken into account with the update. The city currently has four A U A R areas either adopted or in process. The one I just mentioned, the Presswick Place A U A R, which is shown in the center of the map on the north side of the County Road 42. Just east of that, the city did adopt an A U A R for Rosemount Industrial in the northwest quadrant of Blaine Avenue and County Road 42. That A U A R anticipates a distribution center use on that site. The Rich Valley East A U A R is currently in process. That is east of County, or Highway 52 on the north side of County Road 42. That is currently finishing up its review of the scope of the A U A R. That means agencies can review a scoping document that basically says what would be reviewed within the A U A R, and they're given the opportunity to provide comments if they see that there should be some additional issues looked at or considered within the A U A R. And then, once that is finished, the city would order the creation of an A U A R draft. That draft would be put out for review by agencies, and then comments received would also then be incorporated into the final A U A R. So that one is still in process. And then, lastly, is the Umore Park A U A R. That's the largest A U A R within the city. It straddles the boundary between Rosemount and Empire. There is a joint powers agreement in place that names Rosemount as the responsible government unit for updating the A U A R as needed. This is just a close-up of the Umore Park A U A R area with the Project Gymnast proposal included in there. West of that is the Amber Fields Development that's currently occurring on the site, and there's also the Dakota Aggregates Large-Scale Mineral Extraction Operation. The city boundary kind of runs right through the middle of that A U A R area. So with regards to the November 28th Planning Commission meeting, ahead of that meeting, development consultants noted to staff that the project should be able to proceed under the existing A U A R, given that a master development plan had already been approved by the city for the site, and the approval processes were already in place. But following the meeting and given the concerns of the Planning Commission, staff and the project team agreed that a conservative approach that called for a brief pause to allow completion of the A U A R update prior to the city council, considering any approvals for that site, as recommended by the Planning Commission, would be in the best, the best course of action. Just also, staff wants to note that this project is subject to all the same review requirements as any other project that have come before the city in recent years. So with regards to the agency review, which is where the A U A R update is currently, it's published in the E Q B Monitor. It's a publication of the Environmental Quality Board that notifies agencies that there's documents out there to review and provide comment on. During this period, objections may only be filed by those affected agencies and only if one of those three situations is present, basically if the update is completely missing some, some major components that would otherwise, should otherwise be in there. For context, the A U A R update, the original, original A U A Rs are usually several hundred pages in length. The updates are generally about 10 to 12 pages, just to give the, the council some context on what the scope of an update actually is. In 2018, when the Umore Park A U A R was last updated, the city received five, three comments, or three, three comments from three agencies. MINDOT basically said they had no comments. The M P C A provided two comments related to stormwater management. There had been some updates to the calculations needed for stormwater infrastructure requirements. And then Dakota County, who always provides the most comments to any of our reviews that are, that are put out there, provided two related to the Gopher Ordnance work, one related to the fact that they have a well inventory, just informing the city of that fact. One was related to the future improvement of Trunk Highway 52 and County Road 42 interchange, and the need for perhaps some frontage roads over in the eastern portion of the A U A R area. And then, one comment related to Blandings turtles, which is an endangered species that is found in the area throughout southeastern Minnesota. So with regards to the A U A R update itself, because the most recent update was adopted by council on October 16th of 2018, it was due for update by October 16th of 2023. Staff does also want, let, let the council know that the mitigation plan that was included in the original A U R had been incorporated into the city's 2040 comprehensive plan in 2020. So that means the city's transportation plans, water, sewer, stormwater plans, all take into account the development within Umore Park that's been anticipated, and that Amber Fields and the proposed gymnast development is consistent with the development scenarios also anticipated within the A U A R. So staff did initiate the A U A R update in early 2023, and a draft of that update was created in May. But the university asked for some time to review and provide comment on it, and in order to ensure that there was, the transportation plans really took into account the Gymnast LLC request. The actual project itself can't be incorporated into the update because no actual approvals have been made, but updated transportation plans in that portion of the A U A R area have been included in the update draft. So with regards to A U A R update, update, review periods, there's a 10-business-day review period in which, following publication in the E Q B Monitor, the council cannot take any action. And that means that there could be no action for 15 calendar days to accommodate for weekends, account for weekends within that review period. So with the publication made on December 5th, council must wait until after December 20th to adopt the A U A R update prior to making any final actions on any projects within the A U A R area. So that's a little update. I know it's a very technical document. Staff does want to let the council know that you will be receiving a full and thorough staff report related to the actual update prior to taking any action on that. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Numcheck. I'll open up the floor to any council members. Any questions or comments? Any of them like to, go ahead.
Once, once again, Anthony, the, the whole purpose of the A U A R, though, is to encompass both the E A W, and so it's a more higher-level kind of impact looking at this land, right?
Correct, correct. There's a, there's a threshold in which an E A W is required on a standalone project.
Right.
And if the impacts are such, it may require an E I S. But the A U A R is basically saying, we're going to do both of them in this one big document, which is usually 200 to 300, 400 pages long.
Right. So it's more, more in-depth, more inclusive of trying to figure out exactly everything that's going on in this property.
Right, rather than the simple E A W.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Essler.
Yeah, Mr. Numcheck, can you describe who, who's responsible for doing the A U R, A U A R? Who's actually doing it?
So it's kind of a joint effort between a prospective developer and the city. The, the city works with the, a prospective developer, or whoever wants to draft the A U A R, but then the city has its own consultants and staff, obviously, to review the proposed A U A R before it goes to council. But essentially, it's a document that the city owns.
And, and who's involved? Is there oversight from the Public Utility Commission, the M P C A? Who, who else is involved from a state regulatory standpoint? And the reason I asked a question is, obviously, the developer's interested in, in, in developing the project.
Yep.
The city has certain, you know, positive reasons why, why, why would the city would want to have it, but objectively, who's really overseeing to make sure that the study is actually done legitimately and, and, and gets, gets to the right answer, the true answer of, of what the impact would be?
So it kind of goes back to that review period where it gets published for review. So all of, like, the M P C A, the P U C, a bunch of different agencies review the document itself, and then the responses that are received are incorporated into that document, and the city itself reviews it for accuracy and completeness on our side of it.
So there's third parties, other than the developer and the city, who are looking at this, and looking at it and saying, yes, the studies they did, the, the work they did, the research they did, this passes the muster, and this, this is, this is ultimately what, what the report shows?
That, that's correct. There's a lot of eyes that look at it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other council members?
I would say I don't have anything additional beyond the questions that were asked, but I, I do want to thank you for the additional information. I, I did watch the Planning Commission meeting as well, and I was really glad to see the staff take to heart the concerns about the A U A R. So thank you for this detail tonight, and thank you to the Planning Commission as well.
Mr. Numcheck, could you go back to, I think there was a plan showing the, this specific A U A R area? Yep, that one. I wanted to bring up a couple things as part of this, as in responding to some of the comments that we've received. I also understood that there was some misinformation, I think that was, that's been bandied around, both on some of it on social media and things. I just wanted to get a couple things corrected here. The area that's enclosed is the, the data center. There's been discussions of a smart city type development here at Umore. Could you speak to a little bit of, of what that is and what that isn't?
So I think a lot of that goes back to the 2008 concept plan that the university put together for Umore, and how they envisioned it to ultimately kind of develop, and there were some neighborhood nodes where there would be some commercial interspersed with residential around it. Since then, in 2015, the university did decide to go to a more market-based approach to selling off the land with a less prescriptive outline for that. You know, I can't speak to what a lot of the concerns are related to 15-minute cities, but I do know that the concept itself started as an idea that it would encourage development, however the market makes that happen, in a way that people can have more options on how they get around. They don't necessarily have to drive everywhere if they don't want to, or, or even at all. The, the likelihood of that actually happening in a suburban area like this is pretty slim, but I think a good example would be communities that have really strong downtowns, more compact cores and things like that, is what maybe the university was getting at, but like I said, in 2015, I think they decided to kind of just go with what, what the market would bear.
And so along with that, and envisioning the overall A U A R that this is encompassing, there's, this would be the third, actually maybe the fourth, development-related. I'm understanding the, the area that's Dakota Aggregate, which is the mining area, the current area, Amber Fields, which is under residential development right now, the area that's, as I recall, just to the east, Flintlock Development.
Yeah, the one.
Is part of that one. That's that area there. And then, this is the fourth one in that more market-driven approach. So there, there really is no smart city, is it, per se, here? Smart city does not have a definition, I think that was shared online, or out in the sphere. There's actually no real good definition, other than it deals with infrastructure and technology, is my understanding.
I really can't speak to it.
Okay. All right. Oh, the, the area that is directly south of this area, there's some white spots there, buildings and things. I understand that there were some pictures that were floating around that was showing some asbestos. My understanding is that those pictures were taken in that area, which is actually Umore property-directed, is not this area, and that that asbestos was some remedial work that the university was taking on in response to, I, I would imagine something maybe with the M P C A or something.
Right. Without the university here to speak to that, I can say that based on conversations that staff has had with them, they've really identified the areas that are being marketed because those are areas that showed during their remedial investigation that there wasn't contamination that rose to the level of, such that would prevent residential development, which is the strictest amount of, of contamination levels that, that exist.
And I guess I was a little concerned. I've heard and seen some of the comments that some individuals had talked about actually going back in there and taking pictures. People should recognize that that is private land. It is the university, but it is private land, and that would be considered trespassing. I did hear a comment regarding possible lead out in the area, bullets or something. Again, people are walking through there and trying to use the excuse that kids will be kids. I was concerned that maybe, maybe there was some lack of parenting going on there. Again, traveling on private property is not something that I think we would condone, but anyway, well, people should be careful of that type of thing. Is there any other questions or comments from council?
No, thanks.
Anything else from any of the other? Do you have one thing to share, I guess, before we go into public comment?
Yep, we had one additional response that Public Works Director Edgar will provide, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind.
Thank you, yes. A question was asked at the last meeting about pertaining to our recent code changes in Title 10, which governs stormwater, infrastructure, stormwater treatment, et cetera. The comment or question was why the term detention facility was removed from that section of the code, and there was a presumption that because that term was removed, it meant there was some sort of ancillary benefit or a lessening of restrictions, and that's actually quite the opposite. The term didn't appear anywhere else within the body of the language to begin with, so it was basically a language cleanup. However, I want to add that, if anything, over the last two decades, stormwater regulation has gotten more stringent, and we see that in each evolution of the permit that the city has to have to operate our, our own citywide stormwater system. And it comes into play when the city's reviewing development projects. Each and every one has to meet not only the city's code regulations, but a variety of other complementing or overlapping standards and regulations that the P C A has, and we have our own engineering guidelines that tie into these, and on and on. So I, I can say with the utmost confidence that any development that we review is, is expected to meet those standards, and they don't get an engineering department approval of their plan until they do.
Thank you. Any follow-ups?
Yeah, just because it's on the, this part of the agenda, I mean, response to public comment, I guess, probably my response here, my, my, my comments I'm about to share really are in response to some of, some of the public comment that came in on the Planning Commission. I'm okay to speak to that, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, first of all, all five of us on council were, were required and obligated, and we would want to. We look at all the plan, we watch the planning committee meetings, planning commission meetings. We usually don't come to the meetings, just because we don't want the Planning Commission. They're, they're an objective, independent, you know, commission that makes their recommendations, and I think by us showing up at commission meetings, we, we just choose not to do that. We don't want them feeling like they're obligated to do what we think we want them to do. They're an objective body. But we did all watch it, and I'll, you know, my comments on what I saw, and from the, from the, from the comments that I, that I watched for about an hour and a half, in addition to the previous comments, going back to early October, and I'm just going to reiterate, some of you guys were here on October 17th in the commission, in the, in the council meeting. And October 17th, I'd ask you to write that down, review, starting at 10 minutes, going through 13 minutes. I spoke for three minutes. At the town hall meeting, there was individuals that came up to me and accused me of saying something that I clearly didn't say, so I'm going to point that out right now, and I'm asking you to go back and watch it for yourself. But I was accused essentially of saying that I don't care, or I don't listen to those individuals that show up in the, in the chambers, and that's absolutely 100% false. What I said, and I'll say it again, is we need to listen, and we need to hear you guys, but we're also responsible for the other 26,000 residents of Rosemount, and, and to do what we, we believe is in the best interest of the community, not just the individuals. So I was not saying that I don't care about what was said by tho, by individuals in this room. I, I'm, we, 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 we were, we were elected collectively by 26,000 residents of Rosemount. So I'll say that again. It isn't that I care, that I don't care. Second thing I also said as part of that was, we do want engagement. Our five, the five of us on council, we want engagement, but engagement is not coming in and dumping your thoughts and feelings and concerns, and really not listening to the responses. I found it interesting that for about 40% of the individuals that came to the meeting last week, after they, after all the statements were made, nobody listened. Forty percent of the individuals left, left the meeting. They didn't choose, and they chose not to stay and actually hear the responses, and hear, hear what staff has done, hear what the regulators have done, hear what the developers have done to make adjustments to, to, to what, what they're proposing. I think the great thing about this process is that, believe it or not, guys, your input has driven what the propose, what the developers are proposing. The setbacks, the landscaping, some of the mitigation for the environmental issues that have been raised, they built that into the proposal. And, and if you guys would listen, if, if you guys would stay and listen to the responses for what, for what they've done as part of the proposal, I, I think some of you, and some of it, some, some people have came to me and understand, they understand things a little bit differently now after listening to what the mitigating issues have been. So I just ask that you guys continue to do that, continue to engage. We love having a, we, believe it or not, we love having a, a room full of individuals that are engaged in the process and want to hear what's, what's going on. Some, some of the issues, the sound, the water uses, electricity. It was interesting to me that when the experts were up at the podium and explaining, addressing some of the concerns, the next individual that came up right behind them asked the same questions, and, and they just, they just described it, they just explained it, they just explained what they were doing to mitigate the issues. And right behind them, somebody came up and asked the same question. I found that, I find that interesting, because my question is really, do you want to be engaged, or you just want to, you just want to explain why you don't want the project? I think it's important that you understand what they're doing to, to, to make, to make it a viable project, that's something the city would want. The other thing I'm just going to point out is, the developer, at the end of the day, they're responsible for the due diligence. They're buying the property. They're buying the property for their, their use. If there's something on the property that's going to cause a problem for them, that's their problem. Aside from any environmental concerns that you guys are raising, that we, as a city, are responsible for mitigating and addressing and make sure it doesn't have an impact, they're the landowner. They're going to be the ones addressing. So if they can get comfortable with buying the property, doing what they want in the property, at the end of the day, if the property is something other than what they thought they were buying, that's on them. And the last thing I'll say is, we had one individual came in, in, in one of the city council meetings, and he used the term sinister. And he, he was actually, he, he was, was basically pointing out that a lot of individuals in the, in the city that are coming to the meetings feel like the city council, the staff, the planning commission, we're trying to do something sinister here. We're not trying to do anything sinister here. We're, we're looking out for the residents of the community. That's our job. That's our responsibility. And in the planning commission, one of the planning commissioners made the point about having fiduciary responsibility. Fiduciary responsibility is not the right definition. They have the responsibility to be diligent and make sure that projects that we're looking at meet the requirements. That's the planning commission's job to, to advise us whether they do, but that's a diligence question. That, that's not a fiduciary responsibility. Who has fiduciary responsibility to the city of Rosemount is the five of us on council. We have fiduciary responsibility, and part of that fiduciary responsibility is building a tax base to support the services that the city provides to our residents. So that, that's truly who has fiduciary responsibility, and for that reason, the five of us do take that very serious. So I just, I, I wanted to get that on the record. I'm happy to talk to anybody. I'm responding to emails, so if anybody wants to reach out to me directly, I'm happy to have live conversations. But again, I'm, I'm looking for engagement, and we all are looking for that engagement. And that, and that's, and that goes both ways. We, we're listening to you, we're gathering your input. I think the developers building their, your input into what they're proposing, but we're just asking you guys to listen to the facts and listen to the work that's being done going into this, going into this development. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. With that, then, we'll complete item number four, response to the public comment. We'll move on to public comment, item number five. Anyone wishing to come before council may do so at this time. When you do, please state your name, address, including the city that you're from. We would also ask that if there is a fair number of people, if you would, if you're willing to speak, then stand, you can queue up behind the podium so that we can get through more. We're going to have We're going to have, two things I want to correct that may have been in the news. One is that the land has not been sold yet, but is in the process of being done that, so that is not a done deal, and that city council is not taking action this evening. That'll be done after the AAUR information is fully done, as it was indicated by the staff's comments. I would ask that if you've already spoken on this issue, I can tell you that we've already heard over three hours of comments, public comments, to the council through the planning commission. We really don't need to hear the same thing again. If there's something new that you want to bring up, more than interested in hearing that, willing to engage on that. Limit your comments to three minutes or less, and we will, because of other items that we have, and we'd like to limit our public comment this evening to no more than 15 minutes. So with that, the podium is open.
My name is Paul Timmerman, I reside at 13848 Belmont Trail in Rosemount. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to take a moment and address some concerns I have about safety and civility in the city of Rosemount. My wife and I have made our home here for more than 21 years. We've raised two amazing young men in this town, and with the help of this town. We love this city and could not have chosen a better place to raise our family. It's for that reason that I'm extremely concerned about things that I've been hearing lately. I had the opportunity to attend a city meeting the other week. The topic of the meeting is actually irrelevant, it could have happened, you know, the topic could have been anything. At the meeting, there were differing opinions, and I heard references to, quote, "revolution", including the statement, "This is how revolution starts," twice. Honestly, my response to that was, seriously? Revolution because of a disagreement in city politics? Come on, are we being serious here? While some might dismiss these statements, let's be very clear, that is a threat of violence and a direct attempt to intimidate those who hold contradictory opinions. Unfortunately, we live in a time where people are sold on the belief that there are no knowable truths. Don't believe experts, don't trust facts, the only thing that is real is what you feel in your gut. I could stand up here and talk for a long time about how untrue I think that is, but I think if there's one knowable truth we could all agree on, it would be that violence is never the answer. If you are a resident of Rosemount and have uttered these words, or if you stand with people who have, I believe you owe this entire city an apology. That is unacceptable. We are so much better than this. And if you are in attendance at a city meeting, and not a Rosemount resident, and have uttered these words, or stand with people who have, I would just ask that you please leave my city right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like, wish to come forward? Anyone else? Again, feel free to queue behind people.
Hi, my name's Eric Martin, I'm at 15702 Crystal Path in Rosemount. Just generally on the AAUR, it was really helpful to hear the description tonight, and I guess one of my concerns is, if an AAUR is done in 2013, and again in 2018, at a time when plot of land is, you know, it's not determined yet how it's going to be used. Once that is known, and it has a very specific use, and there's a very specific plan involving everything, shouldn't a really complete review be done of that, rather than just, you know, in a week or two, have some review, add some text to the existing document? I guess that's my main question. Is there a full, formal review, other than publishing it in the EQB monitor for agencies? I don't know what the requirements are for them to review it, are they, is it mandatory that anything published there be reviewed by the MPCA, by these agencies? Or is it, if you don't hear anything, we assume they, they're okay with it? So that's my biggest concern, is we've got a very specific plan. Now, it was mentioned that there was an AAUR for a distribution center, and I don't know if that's the giant FedEx place or whatever, but that one had a specific name associated with the AAUR. There are some other ones that are coming up, that we've all talked about a lot. There's a very specific plan for some of those. Seems to me that the AAUR should really, you know, again, it's a couple hundred pages, it's a big, long document. I've not read it all, and I'm not an expert, but it seems to me that now that we know a lot more detail about how things are going to be used, should that not go through a more rigorous review than just publishing it in EQB with, you know, a handful of changes? And that's my, that's my concern.
Thank you.
And I don't know if that can be answered tonight, or if it'll be, will be published later maybe, or?
We'll take, I'll ask staff if they want to take, respond after we've taken all the comments.
Okay, thank you.
We'll either respond tonight, or in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karen Miller, and tonight I just wanted to make some comments about the process of this, not the proposal.
Your address, sorry.
Oh, Karen Miller, 17985 Jakarta Path, Lakeville, Minnesota. So, and again, I just want to make comments about the process. So, I just have concern that the way you as city officials have handled the process, that shows a dereliction in your duty to protect and represent the citizens of Rosemount. So first of all, as we all know, you signed a non-disclosure agreement with the buyer, which essentially shut out the public that elected you, out of the conversation. So when residents would ask you questions, you know, you'd do the best to answer, but it always got to a point where the answers couldn't be given because, quote, you know, "I can't say more because we're under a non-disclosure agreement." Mayor, you've also told members of the public numerous times that Project Bigfoot cannot be discussed because, quote, "We have no proposal before us." But yet, in contrast to that, City Administrator Logan Martin said that city staff have been working with the project team for, quote, "quite some time." So which is it? Were you not aware of the project, or were you actively working on the project, yet purposefully evading public inquiry? It's confusing to the public. Clearly, a lot of development has gone on behind the scenes, and, you know, it seems like all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, almost before the public was even mean aware of what was happening, or were given the opportunity to provide input. So, you know, the people who elected you, the people who pay taxes to fund your salaries, the peoples whose homes and lives and health will be impacted by these projects, they don't know the issues, they don't know the details, they don't have the answers, and this is wrong. A project of such serious scope and impact should truly be brought before the people, perhaps as a referendum vote. Secondly, there is picture proof of asbestos on the land, it was obtained without trespassing, and when citizens brought it up to the mayor and some planning commission members, they were fully unaware of it. So that's really disturbing, whether it falls exactly in that line of the 280 acres or not, it's very disturbing that the mayor and the city was unaware of it and uninvolved with that process. And that doesn't encourage confidence, either for the citizens or perhaps the buyer. And finally, from last week's planning commission meeting, it's clear that city staff, including the city manager, the city attorney, and the planning department, had foreknowledge that the AAUR was indeed expired, yet you were planning to move forward with what is perhaps the single largest project this city's history, in this city's history, on something that was not code compliant. You would have, the planning commission would have approved it as-is unless Commissioner Whitman had not brought this glaring issue into the light and forced it to be addressed. So I want to express appreciation to Commissioner Whitman for bringing that point up. So overall, the way, in these aspects, it seems that the way you've handled these concerns is an example of non-fesence, or which is a failure to do what ought to be done. These areas seem to be a failure to protect and respect, or protect and represent the citizens of Rosemount. And so I urge you to listen to the people, delay the process, call for a referendum vote, this should be the people's voice. Thank you for listening and considering.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmembers.
The mayor's fine.
I've been used to saying "your honor" for a long time. My name is Steve Cherny, I'm a former council member in Burnsville. I'm a former council member, where I currently live, in Lonsdale, Minnesota, and have a hell of a lot of experience with what you all are going through. I'm here not to complain, but I'm here to, and a topic of governance, with respect to me putting myself in your shoes in this matter. I've been following this with the help of some of the citizens here in Rosemount, the whole project, and also in concert with, in Nebraska, where I'm born and raised, in Omaha, outside of Springfield, they have a Metta Center out there as well. So we've been kind of, following the whole project. And here, I ask myself, if I was sitting in your shoes as a council, why would I say no to this project? So I'm just going to leave that before you. Why would you say no? With respect to fiduciary responsibility and revenue, yes, that's definitely important. However, also synergy in the community, you know, the spirit of the community, these folks out here, I don't know, there's maybe 60 people here, I don't know if they represent, you know, the entire community, but they represent a very important voice from the information that I've gathered across the nation with respect to these Metta Centers. So I'm just asking you all, especially you've got a couple of young council, or freshman council folks here, is ask yourself truly the question, you know, setting revenue aside, why would you say no to this project? And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kayla Hauser, my address is 14569 De Homie Avenue West in Rosemount. I would first and foremost like to thank Planning Commissioner Kurt Whitman for spotting that small detail about the date. Without him speaking up on that, it would have just gone through, like usual, without discussing it. That's why you want us here, is to discuss it, but yet, Mr. Mayor, you're telling us you, you're getting overwhelmed with so many comments. Three hours in a planning commission, I get, is unusual, but this is a big project. A lot of people care about this, because this kind of building company will stick around for a very long time. I get elected officials come and go, but this kind of business is going to stick around for a while, and their impact is going to affect the citizens, as well as neighboring communities. I really would like to point out tonight, because I know in the past, a lot of people have been talking about the environmental impact on this issue, but I would like to bring up a very important thing that doesn't happen very often. I pulled CNM's article, because it made me smile. It said, "Metta has managed to get 33 US states to agree on something," which is huge, because we can't even agree on our border safety, we can't agree on what's a man versus a woman, but yet 33 states agreed. Metta is very unsafe, and is detrimental to our children's physical and mental ability to function in society. We're seeing that today, with a lot of the chaos in schools and in society. A part of this lawsuit that they're bringing in is that they're not only violating the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act of 1998, multiple states' consumer protection laws have been violated. Under this lawsuit, Minnesota is one of the 33 states, and I would love to comment or read for you our Attorney General's comment on this matter. "It is my job to protect Minnesotans, especially the most vulnerable. Metta is very intentionally trying to manipulate our children and teens into spending as much time on their platform as possible, despite knowing this is causing serious harm. Metta's effort to addict our young people and sacrifice their well-being for engagement is disgraceful, predatory, and illegal. I am joining a bipartisan coalition of Attorney Generals to hold them accountable for it." Now, again, there's not many things we can all agree on, but I hope we all can agree on safety, especially in our youth. We've had issues in the past with schools and bullying, online bullying, when they're being told they need to send inappropriate pictures, or of friends and things like that. What's it going to be like if Metta is then donating millions of dollars to the city, and then they have Metta's dome, or Metta in the schools and advertising there, and it's just more and more advertising all around? When is enough going to be enough? Because again, we're supposed to be looking at business coming into our town, how it helps everyone.
Please wrap up your comments.
I would like to point out, Metta is not helping everyone. It is helping a few individuals, and the city especially, with their $3 million on trees. Like, come on.
Thanks.
Seriously, we need to look into this more, and not just say, "Okay, it is what it is." It's not.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, that comes up on the 15 minutes allotted for public comments, I'll let the last speaker speak.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown, I'm at 4425 Summer Court, Eagan, Minnesota, and I am a part of this community, my kids go to the school, so the comment about neighboring communities, we're all affected, Rosemount does encompass Coates, Inver Grove Heights, and some other areas, and Eagan. So, I am the person that commented, Mayor, last week on my son going to Umore Park, and I humbly accept your kind of shaming comment regarding the fact that it's lack of parenting. I'll humbly accept that. But I'm going to ask you, what about the lead? The lead still remains. You didn't comment on the safety of the soil. And again, it, I want you, as well as the freshman members, somebody commented on the freshman members that are being a part of this committee, think about the fact that you're signing something that will affect your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. Is this something you want to put your name on? The soil, I do not believe is safe, I saw firsthand. I want you to be thinking about if that soil is safe for anyone who goes on that soil. Yes, my son mischievously took his snowmobile and went in there, and whatever else, I don't even know, but, and lack of parenting, I'll accept that humbly. But I want you to think about your signing that, because we do not want it to be an Aaron Brockovich moment. We all know that movie, Aaron Brockovich, and I see a lot of Aaron Brockovages right out in this community. People will pursue because we love our community, and we will be relentless on that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll conclude our public comments for this evening. We'll move on to consent agenda. Oh, I did want to step back. Does staff want to mention the one gentleman's comment, it was more process?
I can take that if you want.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple notes, I had a few more questions on the AAUR process. I'll largely refer back to Mr. Nemcek's presentation, I had a lot of good detail in there. Because this is online, that video will be out there on YouTube for anybody who wants to look at those slides individually, that's something I'd certainly encourage you to dive into there. A couple of key things to tie into that when we're talking about widespread or large development patterns occurring within the city. So when AAURs are created or adopted, they are then subsequently incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. So the existing Umore AAUR has been incorporated into the city's 2040 comp plan, so it takes into consideration all of those impacts that were discussed during that initial presentation. Traffic, water, other municipal services, utilities, those are already indoctrinated into our comp plan. So that's something that I would certainly point to there. As far as talking through some of the other, just project-specific components of it, it is guided by our land use plan, which is a part of our comprehensive plan. So those uses that are allowed within specific land uses, I designated in the comp plan, those are already enmeshed within the comp plan there, and then acknowledged through the AAUR process. Also should be noted that this project, like any other project, is subject to any and all city codes and ordinances, that's the review that takes place with any development. We have developments that happen every month, every single month at planning commission meeting. Those are all subject to the same requirements that any other project would be subject to, and they go through the same level of scrutiny. So I guess with that, Mayor- So I guess with that, Mayor, council members, unless you had any other questions on that, I would certainly refer people back to that presentation. There's a lot of good information and documentation there.
I think I did want to just double check. So this AUAAR is actually going to continue on for, there'll be another update in five years just simply because there's other developments that are going on. So there really isn't a final AUAAR, correct?
Correct. So an AUAAR would be updated every five years until the development area is complete. So the completion of that entire development area. Mr. Nemchek spoke a bit about the Prestwick Place AUAAR. So there's one too, as that entire area that was shown in the outline on his, his slide is developed, that AUAAR gets updated until that entire area has been fully developed in accordance with that plan and the city's comprehensive plan.
Maybe to add on that, Mayor, you know, just the applicant and the city have the ability to do updates as the development that's contemplated in the AUAAR actually occurs. And so if you caught in, in Mr. Nemchek's presentation, the report was done in May. The developer, the landowner, asked us to hold off on the submittal of the AUAAR because they wanted the impact of Project Bigfoot, if it were approved, to be adopted in the AUAAR. That is why we're in this timing situation that we're in. In response to the questions that were raised, then we're going to publicize, and we have publicized, the May update. But what would then happen to the gentleman's point? Likely, the landowner and the city would then, if Bigfoot were to be approved, would then want to update the development, just like it's updated after Amberfield is approved, et cetera. So it doesn't have to happen every five years. It can happen as development comes. But the normal process, and I think that's what the gentleman was mentioning, is why would you do the review before the project happens? And the reality is, is this, this sets the table for what development could look like. So it, it must happen before development is approved. If we waited for development to happen and then did it, it would be a bit out of order. That said, it also happens after development is approved too. It's kind of the cyclical nature of the AUAAR as it evolves over the five-year period, if, if that added any context. But I just wanted to provide some layman's terms to what Adam just said much more succinctly than, than that, but.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I will, I appreciate the comments from the resident from Eagan. If you felt like shaming, I apologize. Certainly may not have come out that way, but apparently it did. I do know that, that area is the responsibility of the University of Minnesota. And anything that is on that land that is not supposed to be there is between them and the MPCA. The city, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the city may get notifications of those things, but we don't actively know those type of things until maybe we hear something from MPCA. Am I correct in that?
That's, yes. And then, you know, the AUAAR certainly is a component that takes that into consideration as well. But, you know, we rely heavily on those partners to ensure, and like Mr. Nemchek said, the land that has been made for sale in Umore has been chosen because of its lack of presence of that concern. And it's been fairly widely, widely stated that the University of Minnesota land is likely the most investigated pieces of dirt in Minnesota. It, it has so much, years and years of investigation done on it. So when reviewing those documents online, encourage folks to do that. You are looking at documents on some of the most poked and prodded and, and researched dirt in Minnesota because of its history and because there's absolutely contamination in areas of it. But the areas that aren't are the ones that are slated for development. And that, that is what we're relying on, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in environmental analysis that's been done on that property.
Our soil sample results public knowledge? Like, what we get to see through the public soil sample results?
Whatever's in the reports are, I believe, posted.
Yep, the very detailed website for the university property with, with years and years of soil analysis. So could certainly do a lot of reading on that website if folks had interest.
And you can follow up with the university. They're, they're the landowner that's there. So if you have concerns, feel free to reach out to them. This one I had, one, I think I had one. Oh, I did want to make a clarification. Apparently, it appears that maybe someone misunderstood the way I was indicating this. The process, this goes to, I think, some credibility on what you think we know or don't know. We, we get updates on different projects and they are, we know them as maybe a Project Bigfoot or some other project where those things are under a non-disclosure agreement. When those, when those projects are out there, but they may be for projects where staff is being asked for information. There may be multiple sites involved. And so a lot of those things, we've seen over the years, a lot of excitement about a project and then it dies down because they didn't land here. So there's a lot of those type of things that happen. As they gain ground through the process, that project has to have an application, all right? So it, as far as we're concerned, there may be a project out there, but we're not acting on it until there's actually an application. That application has gone to the Planning Commission as it relates to Bigfoot and they have acted on that. There were some conditions that were in that report, that recommendation to us. Council is, again, I'm going to state this again. There is no application before council to act on. There is an application with the city. It has gone to the Planning Commission. We are waiting for it once when it gets here. So just to clarify, you know, when, and it may seem like we're parsing words, but there are things that until they come before us, we don't take action on them. So when I say that there isn't an application before council, I am correct in that. But it is with the city and it has been to the Planning Commission. So I just, please clarify and understand that the, the process does get a little confusing and complex at times. But there is a, a certain number of days and things that we have to act on this. So that is the process. So with this, I'll go back and close item five. We'll move on to the consent. You got one more?
I just got one more question, I think, that came up that I want, I was going to see if, if staff could respond to. The issue about the $3 million that comes from the developer. So in listening to the Planning Commission meeting, my understanding is there's park dedication because this is not really an area that we would have them build a park. There's $2 million, roughly $2 million for park dedication that would come to the city, which benefits the residents of Rosemont. And then the other million, roughly $900,000, is due to landscaping because they didn't necessarily want to do all the trees themselves. But they're, they're doing it in lieu of actually planting the trees so that, can you, can you expand on that and what that $3 million was for? And most importantly, who benefits from that $3 million?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, you're right, Mr. Essler. It's, this is a development fee that every development pays, every homeowner pays. And so your property, if you're not the first homeowner, the first homeowner that built your home paid a park dedication fee. First homeowner that paid your home, built your home, potentially paid a tree, a tree fee as the, as the Lenar or D.R. Horton or whoever did a development. So very typical development fees that are at play here. For a different scale, let's say the new Chipotle building, as that is subdivided, much smaller scale, may have paid, make up a number, may have paid $10,000 or $20,000 or $50,000 in park dedication. Grand scale, like Project Bigfoot, 280 acres, simply because of the scale of the amount of acres being subdivided, it's a calculation, a cost per acre. When you times a number by 280, it gets to be a bigger number. That is why you're seeing a number in that range of that $2 million. Same with the tree, the tree removal fee, the fee in lieu of trees. They're removing a fair amount of trees. They're retaining about 50% of the trees. Because it has such a high scale of acreage, the amount of trees that would have been required on a per acre basis is overwhelming to the property and would not make the property buildable. So in order to retain a buildable parcel, they're paying a fee in lieu of trees. That meant, then means that we'll plant trees throughout other areas of the community. This is on streetscapes and boulevards and in parks and in Central Park. So we have a tree fund where we buy trees and, and plant trees. As we remove ash trees, we, we pull out of the tree fund to build trees elsewhere. So the notion is if a tree can't fit on that exact development, well, then a tree can go somewhere else. Same to the park dedication comment. There would not make sense to have a, a park on FedEx or Home Depot or Bigfoot. But those folks may, on their lunch break, go to a park and take a break and read a book. So the notion of development is that even an employee of a place like FedEx or Home Depot benefits from an active park system. They hopefully live here and their, their family would recreate in a park, et cetera. So that is the logic behind the, the park dedication fee. But yes, it goes into the park dedication fund, which is what does playground replacements, does splash pads, does, you know, a proposed redevelopment someday of Central Park into a much more kind of robust exposure in the area. So it, that, when you come to the Food Truck Fest, your, and Leprechaun Days, the, the power and the strength of Central Park is funded by park dedication fees that development pays. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit of your answer.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, with that then, we'll close. Item five, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's items six, A through K. These include the bill listing minutes from the November 21st regular and special meeting, the 2024 Community Waste Abatement Grand Agreement. It's setting our schedule for 2024. The donation acceptance of community, community donations for Heroes and Helpers event, which was about $24,000, $2,400. $250 of that was supported by the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. In addition, $2,500 was received from the American Legion and $250 from the Danner family. We appreciate those type of donations. There's also a donation acceptance from a Hosanna church for the police reserves through Heartland for $980. Designation of the polling places for 2024. Essentially, its precinct one is, is going to be at the lighthouse in future elections. Approving the Water Service Repair Assessment Request, noting that we had an individual that experienced the utility between the city and the house. What you may not know is that as a homeowner, you're responsible for that. And there is a company that the city has partnered with called Service Line Warranty. So if you are concerned about, essentially it's an insurance policy, but if you're concerned about where the connection from the city is to your house and feel that it may, at some point, need to be repaired or replaced, you may want to consider that. If you're interested, you can reach out to the Public Works people for more direction on that. We also have the approval of an amended JPA for the Diamond Path Roundabout. Residents should know that, that Roundabout, as I understand, the cost to the Rosemont residents was about 12% that we've had to kick in for that county project. And then the 6K was added. The council meeting date changed from the 19th to the 21st. So with that, anyone wish to call, anyone, anything in specific out for further discussion? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Essler, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Lippel? Aye.
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Kreske? Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, 5-0. We'll move on to public hearings. The establishment of the 2024 budget and levy. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It is an exciting night, certainly for city staff as we approve our 2024 budget. And super happy to have engaged residents tonight in the budget. We often don't get to see residents as we do the budget. And so stick around, it's, it's, it's awesome. But we're, we're, we're really excited. The, the budget is one of the most important things that the city staff does and one of the most important things that the city council provides direction on. It really reflects the city's strategic plan, the policies, the direction the city looks to go, and then also reflects the strength of the city. And you'll see some, some numbers in here that show the growth in the city that directly reflects the city council's focus and, and, and effort to growing our city and expanding, expanding the community. So this has been really work in, in process since probably February. I'll talk about that here in a little bit of greater detail. And it all culminates tonight with what you're about to engage in as I'll give you an update here. We'll walk line by, or budget by budget through the budgets. The city council has seen this probably a dozen times by now. And so I apologize for, for, for putting you through it again. But what tonight is, is a public hearing then where we can accept comments from residents who have questions on the budget and any, and any feedback they'd like to provide to the city at this time. So we always start with a few headlines from the budget, just so folks at home and, and council can, can kind of grab onto some, some headlines from the budget. We, we had a record-breaking growth in our value of the community in 2023, or proposed for 2024. So $138 million of new construction value was added in 2023 that then goes in place in '24. To, to show a comparison there, in 2019, which was a strong year for us, we had $47 million in growth. So significant growth in, based on new construction. This is across all sectors, you know, institutional, commercial, industrial, residential, et cetera. Reflecting that then, the city's tax capacity valuation increased by almost 11%, 10.9% tax capacity increase, which is the second largest tax capacity increase in, in the county. So it's, there's no doubt, as folks drive around town, we are growing and we're growing quickly. And then reflecting that growth then is some of the staffing requests and, and, and things of that nature that you'll see as we chat through the budget. Folks often ask, you know, why can't all those new folks pay the taxes? And why are my taxes going up even though there's new folks that might be living on the east side of town or there's that new business? Give them all the new taxes. This, this third bullet is, is meant to show that those new folks and that growth is helping taxpayers and homeowners save money. So about $61 was saved on each homeowner's taxes, thanks to that $138 million. So the proposed tax increase on a median valued home is $107. It would have been $168 had, had it not been for that, that growth in the tax base. So again, last year, $32 was saved to the taxpayer, which is again, is a great number. But 61 certainly continues to show growth in, in the community. Other important things we do, we always talk about public safety. Police Fire Public Works is, is, is arguably the most critical thing that we do. And we see time and time again in, in community surveys that provide safety, keep my family safe, keep my kids safe, is what we do. And that's a critical job. And when we lay our heads down at night, that's what, I know the chief and I, that's what stresses us out, is we want this, this community to, to stay safe. And so, and then certainly Public Works. That's clean water, that's sewer, that's streets being swept, streets being plowed. That's almost 60% of our budget. So just so folks know, that's a critical component, a critical service of what we do. And it's reflected in those being our largest budgets as, as we look through, as we look through the budget here tonight. Even though the budget is seeing an increase in the tax levy, is seeing an increase, so much of it often is connected to, this year, two things. The increase of your median valued home is assessed value. And so as folks are reviewing their tax statement, we always encourage them, the look at the bottom line, that always matters. Look at the three buckets, city, county, school. Where, where does the change lie? And then how much of that change is reflected in a significant or, or not significant, depending on your home, growth in its value? If your home stayed flat from no value change, which we acknowledge is, is unlikely and, and almost impossible. But if it would have, the point of the kind of math equation here is to show the taxes would have decreased by $7 from this budget. So this year, it's your levy, your value increase going up by about 5% on the average home, could be more, could be less based on your home. And then, as folks know, District 196 approved the largest referendum in Minnesota history, you know, almost, almost $500 million. When we've looked at people's tax statements with them, a significant increase in their taxes is, is connected in that school district bucket. Not here to point fingers at our friends and partners in the school district. A lot of that growth, two schools at least, is coming to Rosemont out of that. So that was a wonderful thing for the community. But just wanted to point out that that, that is, that is an impact this year if folks have questions on their, on their tax increase. So overview on the budget, 2024 budget, go, the operating budget shows a 9.67% increase. To fund that increase, the budget levy, the, the oper, the, the tax levy that, that feeds into the operating budget is going up 7.31%. For folks watching closely, and we'll give you a candy bar if you, if you caught this. This is a, a 0.6% reduction from the September preliminary authorization. So we were able to, 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 to very modestly reduce the budget from September to December. Folks that pay attention know that we set the ceiling in September. There's often maybe a, a commentary of that's, that's the ceiling. It's going to stay there. Want to again call out that this one was able to be, to be pulled back a tiny bit from September to December. That saved the homeowner, average homeowner $7, that, that, that 0.6%. So not, not a life changer, but it'll buy you a sandwich at Jersey Mike's. so not not a life changer but it'll buy you a sandwich at Jersey Mike's I could recommend debt issuance for the police and public works campus it results in a four and a half percent levy increase so all told that brings the city's levy increased to to just about eleven point six percent which I think I've got on the next slide so as I mentioned before if your homes saw four point nine nine percent value increase the operating budget increase is leads to a fifty seven dollar annual increase and that debt service levy on the police and public works campus is a fifty dollar tax increase so your overall tax increase is a hundred and seven dollars which is about nine dollars a month to the average homeowner for both the debt service on police and public works and the the operation operational levy we will see that fifty dollar number for the next four years for the police and public works facility and then it will be baked into our budget going forward but residents can expect to see the city's operational growth to occur whatever it needs to be in twenty five twenty six twenty seven and then that fifty dollars is going to stay in the twenty four five six and seven budgets and then it will be baked into our overall operations until it falls off at the end of the debt service calendar so just so folks are are fully aware of that mention the process a little bit we got our preliminary tax capacity value that that's where those numbers came from before the hundred and thirty eight million the ten point seven nine percent department had submitted their budgets met with Ms. Malika and I and it really worked line by line through what's in the budget and what's needed to operate a number of drafts were completed internally city council received updates as early as June and started direct us and hone us in on what they thought as the elected representatives of the community what they thought the residents could could handle and and could conceivably stomach and then guided us to continue to try to squeeze and reduce the budget as we as we have a little bit of a look back here just kind of some interesting data points that we know council always enjoys from fifteen to twenty four about a ten year period our operations have grown about thirty seven point six percent in that same time our value was growing a hundred and twenty five percent so we've added almost two point six two point five six billion dollars in new value that's not construction per se that's also just homes being worth more properties being worth more etc that's the third highest percentage growth in the county Lakeville grew a hundred and fifty one percent Farmington grew a hundred and thirty two and then we're right behind it one twenty four and then this table here shows another metric we will look at which is cost per resident and cost per household just to show how much more it's costing us and we would argue modestly more compared from fifteen to twenty four you know per resident a hundred and sixty two dollars more today to operate the government than it did in twenty fifteen this is a probably one of my favorite talking points or slides that we that we show each year this is what would it what would the median valued home in Rosemount so four hundred and one six hundred four hundred one thousand six hundred dollars if you drop that home in every other community in 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 the county what would they pay in city taxes what would they pay in total taxes and then where does that rank so you'll see that Rosemount that home pays thirteen hundred and thirty five dollars to operate the city of Rosemount that's the second lowest value or cost of government in in the county so Lakeville's number one about a hundred dollars ninety dollars cheaper excuse me a hundred and ten dollars cheaper than Rosemount but we're the second cheapest tax city if you were to drop the exact same home in cities across the community or across the county and then adding in the county and school district gets us to that third column there labeled all taxes where we rank fourth lowest so the school district brings us up a little bit there but again there's you know so depending how you look at it there are nine cities more expensive than us from city taxes or seven cities more expensive than us from all taxes here's a look back at kind of historic growth of the levy and the operating budgets we've been averaging two point two percent levy growth looking all the way back to twenty fourteen and two point eight three budget growth looking back to twenty fourteen as well so showing just a steady increase that we continue to see here in levy and operations similar in tax capacity value there you can start to see some really some some larger jumps it's been steady growth from twenty fourteen but the final the last few years have been more significant growths still growth still trending seven point eight four percent over the course of that term now look at we'll just look at kind of buckets of of each budget this is how generally speaking the city's budget is looked at if if a resident were to dig in to the PDF which is available in the council packet tonight and then on our website we have a city council budget that 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 manages what the city council operates memberships fees things of that nature to the league of Minnesota cities insurance etc this is the second year of us reallocating funds out of the city council's budget to make it a bit more directly focused on what the city council addresses and looks at and instead we placed other items like insurance elsewhere in in the city's budget so a small increase one point four three percent and the pictorial image here just shows we retroacted this this bar chart to to show what it would look like if we kind of leveled out the changes that we made just because like we said we pulled a few hundred thousand out of this budget and and allocated it elsewhere per the council's direction just to make it a bit more easy to to account for and track across the the organization administrative services this is the first year of of a combination of administration and finance into a department called administrative services so again we did a bit of you'll the bar chart you'll see a bit of a retroactive to show what what it would look like had that existed previously across those few budgets we've got a nine point six percent increase this is where you'll see the the much talked about rollout of Oracle as the city's provider of of a lot of technology services that we're in the process of building right now that will take take on our accounting payroll things of that nature going forward asset management so a lot of work happening with Oracle and it comes at a cost it's an expensive product but we're really excited at the impact that they can have on staff efficiency also in admin services we have a new full time employee this is the first of a few that you'll see across the budget that we'll call out this is a communication specialist so this shows a reorganization in admin services and the council's focus on community engagement and the and the and the priority behind community engagement and outreach right now we've been doing a great job of communications press releases social media website management etc council has directed staff to do a bit more as we're growing as we're feeling comments and 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 kind of issues like this the bigfoot conversation right how can we get out in the community have those conversations interact with residents to help them understand and get their feedback and what they want their city to look like etc so this communication specialist will work with our communications manager to to really do the work of communications for the for the city that's a mid-year hire in June to lessen the budget impact so here you'll see admin services a big jump because we combined like three three budgets into one and but averaging out to four point eight nine percent over the course of 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 history key developments this is planning building inspections etc seven point four two percent increase we did a new inspector this year that now we feel the full impact of next year we did a mid-year hire and then we continued to hone in on the best software that can help our team operate in the field as they review building plans on iPads and be more you know functional out of their vehicles as they do the significant amount of inspections that we have so we have some software costs built into that budget that are that's change pretty flat budget for the last many years in community development even with our growth so two point seven seven percent average annual growth in community development police as we mentioned this is the you know one of the most important things we do and and it is our largest budget and so next year shows a twelve point four two percent increase or seven hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars about we we contracted with a criminal prosecutor we have a new firm that's been wonderful to work with but they come at a premium and and it's a bit more of a cost there so we again see the chief negotiated with them to get a rate cap for their work for us to prosecute all of our criminal cases it's a it's based on our usage and our experience with the firm and and it's a it's a good aggressive number and so but in here you'll see a bit of an increase for our cost of prosecution the software we use called Lexa Poll which helps us policy track and all the state mandates for police has an increase as does our Dakota nine and one center the communication center the nine and one center we can we we joint cost share the fees for the nine and one center and so you'll see those fees increasing a little bit here in the police budget and then police has three new staff members the first is an administrative sergeant which provides really critical administrative support to the police chief and the deputy chief inundated with partnership meetings coordinations etc that the chief and the deputy chief do their best to to navigate and often sergeants get sent to that should all should otherwise be on the road or helping train and and guide new officers and so a person like an administrative sergeant will take a significant burden off of the chief and the deputy chief as they attend training they track training they ensure that you know we're up to speed in all of our codes and policies let alone participating in all of the county partnership meetings we also have a crime analyst position that cities of our size and certainly any city larger than us has showing this one hired in June first really critical position here that allows us to do exactly what it says analyze crime a lot of GIS mapping a lot of tracking of maybe FBI posts that that post warrants or notices that for a smaller agency like us without a crime analyst we maybe don't see as quickly as we should or could with a person like a crime analyst they can monitor BCA standards you know announcements and like I said FBI announcements and updates and people of interest etc so crime analyst is going to be a critical role to support investigation they'll also help with outreach help us educate the community on on crime in the community pockets of crime what maybe new crime could be out there scam alerts etc so crime analyst is a is a a position we're really excited to hire in June of next year and then we have a police officer starting next year as well we are pursuing a state grant for that police officer and and hopeful that that funding will be offset by the state grant but this new officer aligns with the city council's goal that we would add an officer every year if our growth trajectory continues on the trajectory that it has been on and and that's really just necessary as we add two three four hundred housing units a year along with commercial and industrial growth our call volumes just continue to increase so critical critical hire there you can see steady growth in the police department as would be reflected in our in our community of our size but still looking historically it goes out to a four point four percent average annual growth across the department fire department we continue to have a paid on call volunteer fire department and so we save significant money for the community with the structure of our fire department we need to begin studying what that will look like to change the structure of our fire department as we get to become a larger community we're having issues we have wonderful volunteers and paid on call volunteers we have issues retaining them attracting them getting them to wake up in the middle of the night and leave their family or leave soccer or leave Christmas and go to a fire call it's a very very hard job and so we'd like to begin studying what it would look like to ease into a rollout of a of a combination fire department that would have some full time capacity so the council has funding inside the budget to allow us to begin studying that chief Schroeder has been really focused on employee health and the carcinogen impact that exists on bunker gear and if we have back to back calls a lack of ability to have a second set of bunker gear that that would be clean ready for a call and so it's a it's we're in our second year of a program to make sure that the guys and gals on the fire department have a second set of bunker gear to ensure that it's always clean and ready for a call and then fire department is looking into rolling out a tool that the police department uses which is called guardian tracking which is a a really nice internal communication tool that allows supervisors to comment amongst each other and track performance and and performance management training etc across the department with a bunch of moving parts and people that are all over the place so guardian tracking is built in there also looking at beginning EMT licensing for all firefighters we have a a subset of our firefighters that are EMTs right now would look to license all of them in the next three years to be full out EMTs which is a is a growth opportunity certainly service providing for the city and then it just continues to cost more to realize the psychological testing that we should really do to ensure that a firefighter is ready to be successful in his or her career so there's some increased costs for psychological testing as we onboard firefighters so a very low number here if you look in the sidebar to have a fire department in a city of our size in the range of you know seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is unheard of so that that number is going to continue to change as we look towards a full time fire department so just want to level set with the council and community on that but we've always talked that that our date would come that we would lose our phenomenal deal on fire and and we're probably in the window of of that that happening public works has a few sub budgets the first is government buildings a four point six percent increase in here is another new FTE starting mid-year kind of late year to manage the fleet and facilities that the city has so as we get as we continue to grow our fleet and our facilities we just need an additional body to help us with both managing and maintaining vehicles but then also the the buildings we have you know as simple as as light bulbs and doors and flags and things of that nature we're just we have one employee that manages all of our buildings and we're we're a bit overwhelmed there and then a few increased costs in maintenance across our facilities the fleet maintenance department has a small increase of sixty thousand dollars which equates to about eight percent they share the cost of the new FTE and then some additional parts and tools needed for fleet maintenance street maintenance has our final FTE in the budget this would be hired January one to get going right away hit the ground running on streets maintenance and so this is a critical hire as we add more lane miles of road this is plowing this is sweeping this is maintenance of roads so just directly reflects the city's growth in lane miles and maintenance we continue to push more into seal coat and crack sealing and then we will also be rolling out and have rolled out our second vehicle for our brine pre-treatment system so that's the kind of de-icing that we can often see maybe wetness sprayed on roads before an ice storm or snowstorm that's a brine treatment that makes the salt stick that much better to then hopefully have better safer streets when the snow does come parks maintenance department or sub department of public works we have an our Emerald Ash Borer Response Program that I kind of mentioned previously talking about trees and what we do with our tree funds getting out ahead and we're just about to the end of the city owned ash trees as we take them down and we replace them out of that tree tree removal program we continue to have more parks and more neat for fertilizer and weed control in the parks and we have more ball fields with Umore and Flynn Hills so some field dry and some chalk for our new fields exist inside this budget so all told you see the four budgets there about a two percent average growth across those the ten years with varying growth situations in the sub budgets last but not least is our parks and rec budget a seven point zero six percent increase we have just some increased utility costs at at facilities and I think Mr. Schultz gets the award every year for having a reduction that we're able to call out but had a reduction in HVAC's maintenance that's the steeple center with with some previously projected work that doesn't need to happen next year in HVAC so a small reduction in the parks and rec budget for next year but no other additions or FTEs added beyond cost of living so three point five three percent average annual growth across the parks and rec department so that is the extent of our budgets that I wanted to talk through mayor and our in our detail of what we've been through the last you know ten months here crafting this budget tonight in front of you is to hold the public hearing address any comments or questions that the residents could have staff's ready to answer questions and then you have a recommended action in front of you to certify the budget.
All right with that I'll open up to council any questions or comments for Mr. Martin.
Do you want to start?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah I got a couple here so back to the beginning in terms of the process I think we landed at about a seven point three percent aside from the police and public works building seven point three where did it start where did we start so in terms of your your initial draft?
In the nines maybe even ten.
Nine point six seven right there?
No that what plus the four point five I mean so we had some we had some scary numbers internally to start but I would say the operations budget was probably close to ten percent increase before we got it down here to seven point three.
Okay.
If you agree with that too but I it was speaking around numbers that's a pretty we we had to squeeze it quite a bit because we weren't going to bring that kind of a number in front of the city council.
Yeah it's it was up there.
I don't want to tell how bad it was.
Double digit I'm hearing okay but it's down to the seven point three okay and then you know that you you show the pluses and minuses at a department level and it does you know generally it doesn't even come close to what the total increase were in most cases I think a lot of that a lot a lot of that would be salary increases right salaries benefits I mean that that's going to be four or five percent increase year over year right I mean that's just a.
Thank you yeah I should have called that out our budget is about eighty percent employees you know we're a service organization and and so yes we're about eighty percent salaries and benefits and and you know cost of living anywhere from three and a half to four percent is an immediate four percent increase to the budget no matter what we do so well said yep.
Yep so one thing is as I think about that maybe next year going forward when you do those pluses and minuses maybe call that out so it's I mean it's 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 obviously the largest impact year over year is always going to be the salary increases generally the market doesn't go down in terms of of salaries so that would be good and then can you talk a little bit more again about the fire I mean you mentioned it in the slide the fire department you know we've we've been operating as a part-time operation all of our neighbors I mean all the communities around us have have gone to a full-time you know at some you know to some degree having full-time staff so maybe could you talk a little bit about that I mean we are very unique and obviously that's going to have an impact going forward from a funding perspective right?
Right we're the only agency of our size that has doesn't have at least a full-time employee so whether that's a fire chief or a fire marshal folks don't realize but our fire chief who we see as a department head and he is a fellow department head he crafts his own budget he has training and HR responsibilities makes a small stipend in the low twenty thousand dollars to do what's in many other cities a full-time job in all other cities is a full-time job so that is why we're seeing that that significant savings in that budget we also don't have folks maybe aware of a thing called the duty crew where you might have four to six team members that are getting an eight hour twelve hour salary that sit at the fire hall and they're ready to go at any time we don't have that and so that would be a salary number that those people might be making X amount of dollars per hour for a twelve hour guaranteed shift right now we pay firefighters when they come and serve at a call and then when they leave they they're done getting paid and so you might go to a one hour And so you might go to a one-hour call that's like a fender bender car accident or more than a fender bender because we don't go to those, but you understand my point. And, and so that's all that person gets is a one-hour salary as compared to somebody who might get a 12-hour wage.
And then my last question is on the police. If you can flip to that slide. Again, a 12.4% increase, it's a large increase, 727,000. My math is right, that means their budget is around a $5.9 million budget. I think just awareness, yeah, last year, yep, last year's would have been 5.9. I mean, it's just, I, I think it's just an awareness for our residents that, that isn't expensive, it's a good, it's a good chunk of our budget. We hear constantly the feedback from our residents that our police are very valuable. They appreciate the work they do, and we continue as a council to support, you know, public safety, both fire and police, along with public works. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty significant increase. I think you'd mentioned that, you know, the, the, the concept of one per year. I think we probably tie that to number of residents, you know, it's probably per thousand residents, that's probably what it's tied to. So again, as we continue to increase population and, and your point about, you know, nu- number of residents, population, businesses, commercial, industrial, you know, it, it will continue. And we, we obviously, again, we're listening to the residents and we hear that there's a big degree of importance on public safety and we'll continue to support that. And that's it. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Okay.
I was just gonna, if, I just have a small piece. If you could go to the comparison slide to the other communities. The only call-out I, I would like to have here is, so what I, I guess from a council perspective and, and, you know, being called, you know, maybe one of the freshman council people, one of the things that I, I really like about this is seeing all the growth and all the good things that we are doing, you know, from a, from an expansion and growth and a healthy growth, still keeping the taxes and fiduciary responsibility, I think, is very important. So we appreciate that as council because those are the things that we want to work on each and every day when we show up. So this is just a call-out that I just wanted to kind of, like, for the people that are watching at home, the people that are still here that we appreciate, you know, engaging with the community. I think it's just, this, this slide really tells the story, in my opinion, that even with this growth, even with all the different things that are going on in Rosemont, the fiduciary responsibility of everybody between staff and council, trying to do what's best for the Rosemont residents is our top priority.
No, I'm just going to say thank you. I know when you guys first showed us budget number one, it was a little alarming in my seventh year of city council because it was by far the highest I've seen. But it's, it's warranted because we need some of these new employees to keep operating at the level our residents expect. So thank you. I know you guys really worked hard to get it where, where it is today. The only thing I'd like you just to comment on, and it was on the police slide, is just maybe explain a little bit further how we're able to use a separate fund to help hire a new police officer. Because I think that's critical when we're looking at our public safety roadmap for now until the next five, 10 years is where that money is coming from.
Yeah, if folks paid attention, in, at the legislature last year, there was a stipend given to all cities called Public Safety Funding, I think it was the direct title of it. And so we received, was it 1.1 million, I think, Tia, 1.2 million from that fund? And so we've talked with council about how we can apply that fund for public safety over the next number of years. And so it's a combination of some of those funds for fire, to research how fire can happen, a fire kind of modification could happen. And then also we've worked with Chief Dolstrom on, okay, how can we use these public safety funds? They're meant for bolstering public safety in communities across Minnesota, kind of post-pandemic, post-civil unrest, et cetera. They're meant to be hired and, and grow the profession and support public safety. And so this person would be partially funded by that, that public safety fund. What we've done internally to get real wonky is kind of almost grant, given ourselves a grant over a number of years to, to hire this person in '24 and then wean ourselves off that funding as we pull that funding away from ourselves as we spend it. And so that's how we, some, some cities have used it to buy, they got a million dollars, they bought a million-dollar fire truck, you know, and that's fine for them and a fine choice. Or do a million dollars of renovations to your police station or something. We're using it for, for staffing because the need in Rosemont is staffing.
Thank you.
Then could you pull up the slide that probably shows the 4.5% for the PD, PW campus? I just want to have you just reemphasize the idea that that number, while it's spread over four years, could have been all in one year. And this was something that I think council gave direction to, to staff. How could we ease that burden a little bit? We know everybody wants the police and public works campus there, but how was a, you know, we all have budgets to deal with. So could you kind of explain how that came to fruition?
Yeah, I mean, as we worked with our financial advisor on it, you know, the full freight of that, you know, $58 million building would have been $200 on a median valued home. And talking with council, looking back, you know, this is with Heidi, right? This is my seventh budget here in Rosemont. We, we often hover in that 60, 50 to $70 is our operational costs to just survive and grow, as Mr. Essler pointed out about COLA, et cetera. So if we've got a 50 to 70 that's likely to happen, can we handle 200 on top of that, knowing also that our partners at the school district are talking about a pretty significant and important referendum there? So direction to council to work with our financial advisor was can we break that and phase that in over four years? And we were able to do that, to, to keep that capped at $50, to then lessen that, that initial impact and kind of, again, build ourselves into it.
And then just a point of history, if you go back to, I believe, the one council member Tyson had requested, just for some historical perspective, even prior, before I got on council, Rosemont would have been on that list number 10 or 11. So it's, it's always been councils, you know, over the last 20 years, certainly, to try to drive that ranking back up towards the top of the list. And I think we are continuing to successfully do that. And I just want to call that out from a point of history is recognize we used to be an expensive place to live and now we're, we're on that other end, so it's better.
Mayor, if I could call that out too, I don't think I did a good, good enough job of, of kind of explaining this, but I sit up here and talk for 30 minutes and people get tired of me, but Tia crunches these numbers. And it's like a sheet like this is, is crunched by Tia. There's a lot of work to produce this, this sheet and, and the budget in general is, she's got hundreds of hours into the budget. And so huge shout-out to, to Tia for, for crunching it and, and then she elbows me into talking here, but...
And I know after we take action tonight, you get about a couple of weeks and then we start it all over again, so do appreciate that time and effort.
Yeah. So, so on this slide now that I'm looking at this, couldn't if you found three more dollars and we could have slid ahead of Egan? Three dollars.
Keep passing.
Thanks for trying.
Yep. All right. So with that then, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come before council, any comments you wish to express? If you could, if you could, keep those under three minutes, we'll take those questions or comments, hopefully provide any answers. If, if not, we'll provide them at a later time. But come forward, state your name and address, and podium's open.
Joe Gergen, 15731 Sisroon Path. Regarding the fire department, the full-time fire department, do we have anybody looking into partnering with like Flint Hills, FedEx, Meta that's coming to town? Their insurance rates, maybe not Flint Hills, but their insurance rates would probably go down if we had a full-time fire department? And I don't know if that's an option to look into that?
Certainly. Staff can certainly...
And I guess one other issue, and maybe this isn't concerning the budget, but in my neighborhood, there's lots of people with Emerald Ash Borer trees. Is the city at some point going to mandate that they're taken down?
Anybody want to throw a wing at that one? Not at the moment.
Well, my concern is...
We can bring that back to the next meeting and be able to respond to that better.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'd be great because, well, I got a neighbor that's got four of them and one of them's hanging right over my driveway, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wish to come before council and at least speak on the budget? Yeah, this, this, this is the public hearing for taxes, the public hearing for the tax
My name's Brian Rornback, I live at 12485 Blanca Avenue West, which is Oakwood Estates. And I'm just investigating the prospect of streetlights. We don't have any, never have.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll adjourn here in about five minutes, we can exchange business cards and be in touch.
Very good.
Thank you.
One more time, anyone want to talk about the budget? Public hearings for the budget, we'll certainly be around if you have other issues later. So going once, twice, and I do want to thank you that have stayed, honestly, it's probably the most that we've had in front of a tax levy hearing in ages. So we do appreciate having an audience. I know Logan does, he loves having an audience. Yeah, so with that, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
A motion and second on the floor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is completed. With that, we have the recommended option to approve and setting the 2024 General Fund Operating Budget, the 2024 CIP Budget, the 2024 Insurance Budget, the 2024 Port Authority Operating Levy, and the 2024 Levy. Anyone wish to move the recommended action?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution setting the 2024 General Fund Operating Budget, the 2024 CIB Bud, CIP Budgets, the 2024 Insurance Budget, and 2024 Port Authority Operating Levy, and the 2024 Levy.
Second?
Got a motion by Freski, second by Klimpul. Roll, please.
Klimpul? Aye. Wiesensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
That completes item 7A. Thank you for 5-0 passes. With that, we'll move on to item number eight. Back here to unfinished business, which we have none, nine new business, which we have none, 10 announcements, city staff updates. Mr. Martin?
Mayor, I think I'm set for tonight if we have anything else pending, but otherwise we can give you the microphone back.
All right, anything from council? Seeing none. The community calendar, we have coming up, the Planning Commission. This is a different date from their normal time, so Planning Commission this year, this following month, or this month is December 18th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock here in council chambers. The Planning Commission meeting is from, oh, that was, was it duplicated? All right, Park and Rec meeting is also the 18th, only it's from 7 to 8. Hold it, let me back up here. Clerk, Planning Commission meeting, I got it 8 o'clock, 6:30 to 8 o'clock, and I got a 6:30 to 7:30 is the updated, okay? And the Park and Rec regular, where are they having their meeting?
They'll likely be held in the work session, or in the council chambers.
Council chambers.
Or in the conference room.
Conference room.
Planning Commission will be held in here.
Okay. All right, clarifying that, they're both on the 18th. Park and Rec is 7 to 8 in the conference room of City Hall. The next Port Authority meeting is currently scheduled for the 19th from 6 to 7 p.m. here at council chambers. And the next city council member, council meeting is on the 21st as the consent agenda item that was added. So Thursday, not Tuesday, Thursday, the 21st, 7 to 8 p.m. here in council chambers. And the Youth Commission meeting, I'm also going to announce, is on the 20th. Typically, it's on the fourth Wednesday, this, because of the holidays, is on the 19th, I'm sorry, the 20th, from 3:45 to 4:45, again, at the Steeple Center, correct?
Correct.
All right. And city councils, or city halls closed on the 25th. Anything?
Yeah, question, Mr. Mayor. The Port Authority meeting scheduled for the 19th, will that also be moved to the 21st?
Mr. Mayor, we'll likely be canceling Port Authority this month.
Oh.
So, it's currently the 19th, but until that comes out, there'll be an update to that probably.
Correct. Sounds good.
All righty.
Mayor, you're mentioning Santa visit? Did you want to mention that?
Well, I thought you had that in your update.
Well, I, I, I took the, took it back.
You're taking it back.
Chief wants you...
Chief wants to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the save. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
For the important stuff now.
Yes, yes, the fun stuff. In the true spirit of the holidays, we do have the Be Good for Goodness Sake Santa Parade. Again, we have two routes this year, and residents can go online to check out the west side route and the east side route. The west side route starts at 10 a.m., Santa will be making his way around the west side of town, and the east side route starts at 12:30. So there's actually a live GPS tracker that our, our GIS experts have put together. You can follow Santa and see when he's approaching your neighborhood, it's pretty cool. We are accepting donations again to 360's communities, which we donate to every year on that, on that effort. This year, they're looking for toiletries, paper products, non-perishable foods, textured hair shampoo, diapers sizes five to six, baby wipes, and any culturally specific foods. So we got that going on, hope to see all the residents out there again on the side of the road, we'll have people picking up the donations. Santa will be carried around by our fire department and escorted by the police department, so, and the only other...
Just one clarification on that, just to help residents, east side, west side is, where's the split? Highway 3?
Well, I would encourage you to go to the route online, but I would say Biscayne is the, is what we're using as the west and east side. So yeah, west of Biscayne and east of Biscayne.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to help out. And you said you had something else, or that was it?
That's cool.
That's it? All right. Anything, any other business to come before council? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.